regular meeting Tuesday, July 16th, 2024. Our invocation tonight will be done by Jeremy Colley.
Let us pray. I do, Lord, thank you for this day, and just thank you for all of the blessings that you've given us, and, uh, Lord, I just want to thank you for this time that we get to meet together, and I just ask that you help us keep our thoughts, our actions, and our words clear, and always reflect you, and, and, Lord, just thank you for this leadership we have in this town, and just continue to, uh, have a hand on them, Lord, in their decisions for this town, and, and, uh, Lord, I also want to thank you for the students and the athletes that we have that always represent our town so well, and just thank you for, um, everything that they've done for us, and, and, and honor this town, and, and, Lord, just continue to to have your hands on us, and, and oversee everything we do, and always reflect you, Lord, and, uh, again, just want to thank you for all the many blessings that, that you've given us, and, uh, Lord, just help us to always, uh, reflect you in everything we do. Uh, Jesus, in my prayer, amen.
Amen. Councilman Law will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some very exciting things happening tonight, so we're gonna start off with ring presentations for the 2023 Dixie Youth Boys Ozone Division One State Champions, represented South Carolina in the 2023 Dixie Youth Boys Ozone World Series in Ruston, Louisiana. Liba Rentsch, our athletic director, will get up with us and, and call the names.
Would all of the champions please come to the front of the room, and coaches? Mayor Hamilton and Town Council want to present to you the 2023 South Carolina State Champions of the Ozone Division. We gave them a proclamation last year, just after they came back from the World Series in Ruston, Louisiana, and ordered rings for them, but, uh, that takes a little while for them to come in. So today, we're gonna present these young men with a ring that has a state champion logo on it. Presentation of the rings will be made by Mayor Thomas Hamilton, and assisting him would be, um, Austin Rensel, who is over our baseball program here at the Recreation Department. Landon Cox.
Congratulations.
Dougie Floyd. Carson Hayne Line.
Congratulations.
Carter Hayne Line.
Right, congratulations.
Lane Lucas. Caleb Morris. Leighton Oliver. Davis Owens. Mason Prince. Jason Stackley, Jackson Stackley, sorry.
Congratulations.
Nicholas Stevens. Ansel Todd. Coaches, Landy Cox.
Congratulations.
Doug Floyd.
Congratulations.
And Ryan Owens.
Congratulations.
This group not only won the state championship, but they represented our town, the Low Country's hometown Monks Corner, and the state of South Carolina in the World Series last summer in Ruston, Louisiana. And one last presentation, Mayor, if you would present this to Coach Landy Cox. This is a plaque which will be placed at our recreation complex on the wall with the rest of the champions, uh, for it to be recognized, for you to be recognized forever, so y'all will be able to come out and, and see this at any point in time. So, guys, again, congratulations, and thank you so much for representing your hometown and your home state in the state championship and the World Series. Coach Cox, did you want to say a word?
First of all, I'd like to thank, um, from the mayor, um, to the council, I'd like to thank everybody for what you do for Monks Corner. I've, I've had opportunity over the years, I think about running the town, um, of coaching our guys, uh, through the rec department, but it is a very special place, from finances to how nicely facilities. I walked out the other day on a kickball tournament, and half these parents will tell you, our grass is absolutely ridiculous nice, there's not a college field with any nicer grass than you got out there. But I'd really like to thank all of you for what you've done. I know this probably this plaque right now does not mean, you know, everything to these guys, it, it won't mean something later on, but myself and these coaches, um, this was in my 50 years, this is the greatest summer that I ever had, and, and probably that they'll ever have in their life. And, uh, I would just like to, to thank you, I was, me and my wife was in Columbia and watching the nine and 10-year-olds, and I heard about six different towns' rec departments screaming to the top of their lungs, fighting on the last couple of days, uh, trying to stay alive, and I looked at her, I've had the opportunity to coach in college, highest level in high school, there's nothing better than rec baseball, um, it's just something, and I want y'all to know, um, may not be doing it anymore, but for the future with anybody else, there is nothing more special than playing baseball for the town of Monks Corner Rec Department, and we appreciate it.
(laughter) All right, next on the agenda, we have a proclamation for Berkeley High School Beta Club. They went to the Nationals and, and brought home some championships, so Liba will read the proclamation.
Again, if you are a member of this national champion Beta Club, and coaches, would you please come up front? Mayor Hamilton and Town Council, I will now read the proclamation. Whereas the 2024 Berkeley High School Beta Club consists of 184 members in grades nine through 12. Of the 184 members, 137 students attended the state convention in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, on February 8th through 11th, under the outstanding leadership of lead teacher Brittany Colley, and sponsors Kathy Jones and Jeremy Colley. And whereas these students competed in over 60 academic, art, and talent competitions against students from all over our state. As a result, 86 students qualified for the national convention that was held June 15th through 18th in Savannah, Georgia, where they competed against thousands of students from all over the country. And whereas Mayor Thomas J. Hamilton and Town Council are deeply proud of the Berkeley High School Beta Club, and would like to call public attention to this group and recognize them for their outstanding accomplishments and commitment that advance them to compete at the national convention. National Convention, first place, large group talent. Third place, Division One Poetry, Kylie Wright. Fourth place, Division One Color Photography, Jillian Fisher. Seventh place, show choir. Eighth place, Division Two Quilling, Cameron McCutcheon. Eighth place, Division One Digitally Enhanced Photography, Keller Walford. Ninth place, Division One Quilling, Sullivan Giaveli. In the state convention, first place, ninth grade Agro Science, Michaela Clark. First place, 11th grade Agro Science, Tyler Umflit. First place, 12th grade Agro Science, Mason Salisbury. First place, 10th grade French, Taylor Wallslag. First place, 12th grade Language Arts, Sidney Wright. First place, 11th grade Agro Science, Mason Salisbury. First place, 11th grade Social Studies, Riley Ballantyne. First place, 9th grade Spanish, Ivana Ramos. First place, Division One Quilling, Sullivan Giaveli. First place, Division Two Quilling, Cameron McCutcheon. First place, Group Performing Arts. First place, Trading Pen. First paid place, Campaign Skit. Second place, Show Choir. Second place, Musicology. Second place, Solo, Duo, Trio Performing Arts. Second place, 3D Design. Second place, 10th grade Agro Science, Addison Metz. Second place, Division Two Poetry, Riley Finters. Second place, Book Battle, Charlotte Mueller, Sofia Perez, and Sofia Ramos. Second place, Division One Recyclable Art, Caroline Gary. Third place, Division One Poetry, Kylie Wright. Third place, Division One Color Photography, Jillian Fisher. Third place, Division One Digital Enhanced, Keller Walford. Third place, 9th grade French, Kendall Edwards. Third place, 10th grade Biomedical, Daniella Monson. Third place, 10th grade Social Studies, Caleb Knighton. And third place, 12th grade Biomedical, Connor Barham. Now, therefore, be it so resolved that Mayor Thomas J. Hamilton Jr. and Town Council members of the Town of Monks Corner, County of Berkeley, State of South Carolina, do hereby acknowledge and applaud Berkeley High School Beta Club for their historical achievements, signed this 16th day of July in the year of our Lord, 2024.
We're gonna, we're gonna hold up a couple minutes to let them leave out, and then we'll continue on. I have a motion, second, all in favor, aye, that's approved. Mayor's report. Thursday, June 20th, Habitat for Humanity, we did a celebration of the owners getting the keys to their home. Councilman Dennis was in attendance. Friday through Sunday, June 21st to 23rd, um, myself and, and my wife Carolyn, we attended three days of the girls' state softball tournament, where our recreation staff worked diligently to make this event go as smooth as it did. You would not believe the emails and response I had from other, um, teams on how fine a facility and how well it was run. Um, Monday, June 24th, participated in a ribbon cutting for the Closet of Hope at the DSS office. This organization makes sure that kids going into foster care have clothes and other items. Councilman Swetman was in attendance. Thursday, June 27th, ribbon cutting at Swig and Swine and the Marina Store. This was a, a very good grand opening. Councilman Law, Swetman, and Dennis was in attendance. If I ever miss anyone, please let me know. Friday, June 28th, I participated in a food giveaway at the Farmer's Market Pavilion. Then Friday, June 28th, I attended a luncheon for the nonprofit Healing Farms to learn about the programs they offer, and them wanting to come into Monks Corner to offer more programs. Saturday, June 29th, we had the 4th of July Celebration at the Rec Center. We had a great crowd that kept the vendors lined up all day, all night. Um, I seen Councilman Dennis, Swetman, and, and Jay Law was in attendance. You know, I'd like to extend a heartfelt thank you to everyone that worked so hard to make this happen. That is a total team effort to pull something that big off, and we have such a dedicated staff that does that. Friday, July 5th, I attended the send-off for our nine, 10-year-old All-Star minors and our 13, 14-year-old Dixie boys. I would also like to thank the fire and police departments for their assistance in supporting this. You know, something about the fire trucks and having the police cars and the motorcycles out there gives it a little extra kick. And then Thursday, July 11th, I attended a luncheon hosted by the Monks Corner Rotary Club, where I had the privilege to introduce myself and address the attendees. During the event, I provided an update to the current and upcoming activities of our town, as well as highlighted some of the exciting future events on the horizon. For future events, um, July 27th, I'm partnering with one of the local churches to do a, a bookbag giveaway at the, um, rec complex. Saturday, August 17th, the Monks Corner Police Department will be sponsoring a car and bike show from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Monks Corner Rec Complex. They did ask me to be one of the judges, so be ready. And I answered, went to, and spoke to several citizens this month. Um, I also would like to thank, you see a lot of familiar faces, faces that come to these meetings every month, and I, and we appreciate that, and that's my report. So Administrator's Report, Mr. Lord.
Yep, Mayor and Council, I have a few things to update you on. Uh, first of all, um, the park master plan, uh, continues to move apace. We've got the plans for Lacy Park and the pickleball courts are close to being finalized. We've got some just utility issues for them to figure out, and so hopefully we'll be bidding that out soon. So that, that project is moving quite well. Um, along, along the same lines with recreation, the inclusive playground, uh, that project is out to bid. We had a mandatory pre-bid bidding last week, had six different contractors show up, so that's a good turnout, and those bids are due August 6th, so if everything goes well, we hope to have that for y'all to, uh, review and approve at the next council meeting, get that underway. Uh, we do have the contract signed on the Fox Mass Arms and Intersection Improvement Con, um, project, so that project is signed, sealed, just not delivered. Uh, it is an 18-month build because of the time it takes to get mass arms, but, uh, hopefully we'll start seeing work out there in the next couple of months. Uh, we do have, um, a draft budget, uh, for you to start looking at, and I will be reaching out to schedule a budget workshop in the next two weeks, uh, so please look for my email trying to get, coordinate that, um, and go through the, go through the budget with y'all, and then decide, uh, if, the process for first reading, if there's another workshop and so on. So, uh, please, just take a, take a look at it, um, I, I think you'll see a, a lot of the stuff that was discussed in the council retreat, you'll, you'll see in there, and uh, a great, uh, job by your department heads to work together to make sure we're able to accomplish as much as possible with the resources that were, uh, given, so, uh, that's for your review. Uh, and the last thing I'd like to say is I've got a introduction done by Mr. Westbrook.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Justin Westbrook. Due to a, an opening that we had recently, uh, for deputy building official within our department, uh, obviously you've seen the houses and the growth, the inspections, um, we're in desperate need of, of some help for Tim, and, uh, some guidance for some of our younger people, uh, as they work to get our certifications. I'd like to introduce Jamie Baker tonight. Jamie comes from us from the city of Charleston, uh, he was there for about a year where he obtained eight certifications, which is, uh, a pretty breakneck speed, uh, to obtain. We hope that, uh, to start him on his path to become a certified building official or CBO very soon, um, where he'll have about 18 months to obtain that, we, we think he's gonna do that in, in record break, uh, records pace as well. Prior to the city of Charleston, he worked as a German lineman, uh, for the Department of Defense for about three years, um, and then prior to that, Sumter Utilities, where he worked for them up there, uh, for about six years. Before that, in another life, he was a Marine, uh, where he obtained the rank of sergeant after about 10 years, and he is local, so he comes from us from, or he was born and raised in Berkeley County, so he knows the landscape well, and we're very happy to have him, and, uh, hopefully help provide some additional leadership to, uh, the department inspections, so we can make sure that, uh, all the construction that's, that is occurring in Monks Corner is, uh, happening safe and above board and to all the standards that we have. So please welcome me, uh, in introducing Jamie Baker to the town.
I was talking to Tim about you today, and he had a lot of good things to say about you, so welcome.
Thank you.
Alright, Mayor and Council, that concludes my report, but if you have any questions, of course, I'll be happy to address them.
I do. Um, Administrator Lord, question on that intersection at Broughton Road and Main Street. Anything going on with that anymore? Talk about what we're gonna do there, or how that's looking with the park improvement?
Uh, yes, sir. So we engaged the firm that y'all chose for the traffic studies, uh, to look at options for that intersection, and they should start that process, I mean, they already started the, the research on it, but...
Not that back yet.
Oh, no, sir, it'll be, it'll take a couple of months to get that.
Okay. Thank you.
I think you said too, that they want to wait to school traffic so they can kind of gauge that as well, right?
Yes, sir. They want to look at the traffic flows during school. Thank you.
Alright. Um, there's no new business to be brought before council, old business, there's no old business to be brought before council. We did not have anyone to sign up for public input, so executive session, the discussion, negotiations for a proposed contractual agreement related to roads. I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss, second, all in favor. Y'all quick.[1562.30][1562.30](laughter)
Does there are motion to come out of executive session?
Over.
Second, on favor.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Counsel is out of executive session, are there, there was no action taken in executive session. Are there any other matters to come before counsel?